The June 12th St. Bernard Village Committee of the whole meeting will please come to order. Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Mr. Morton?
Present.
Mr. Stutzel?
Present.
Mr. Edwards?
Present.
Ms. Hausfeld?
Here.
Mr. Schuldmeier?
Present.
Mr. Culbertson?
Present.
And Mr. Estep?
Here.
Let the record show all seven members are here. Members of council, what is your pleasure on approval of the written minutes of the May 22nd council meeting?
I'll make a motion to dispense.
I'll second that.
Motion to dispense made by Mr. Estep, seconded by Ms. Hausfeld. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 So ordered. I think we'll go ahead and move to reports of administrative officials. Mayor Stutzel?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd first like to start by asking for a moment of silence for Cheryl Abrams, who passed away suddenly, May 29th. Thank you. Cheryl served as the administrative assistant to the mayor under both John Estep and myself until her retirement in 2024. Cheryl was a special person and served as our house mother here at City Hall and even beyond retirement remained in close contact with her former coworkers and their families. Cheryl, your passing has left a definite void in our hearts and we will miss you. This evening, we have a special council meeting for the approval of ordinance number 17, 2025, to go under contract with Mark Wendling as our permit director of public services and safety. And the selection committee, including myself, Connor Morton, Chris Schuldmeier, and Chris Sauer are asking for your support. You have been given a copy of the contract and also of Mark's resume to review, but due to the time period in which Mr. Wendling needs to provide notice to his current employer, we need to get this in process. I will be working with Mr. Williams for support during the interim period before Mr. Wendling officially start his official start date. So we'll be in good hands and there will also be an acting director of public services and safety. A heartfelt thank you for those who attended and assisted with our Memorial Day ceremony as we paid tribute to those who made the ultimate sacrifice. I am forever grateful to our community, our fire, police, and service, and recreation departments, members of council, administration, our community organizations, the St. Bernard Eagles, St. Bernard Lullow Grove Historical Society, and the St. Bernard Senior Citizens Club, Troop 354, the Delta Kings, Bagpiper Roger Loth, and our spiritual leaders Reverend Jonathan Bradner and Father Judd Weixner. We also had a beautiful day to reflect and remember, which ended with St. Bernard's very own Jerry Wallman singing Our Land, St. Bernard. Thank you again, and as stated by Calvin Coolidge, the nation that forget which forgets its defenders will itself be forgotten. The St. Bernard Garden Club held its annual blessing of the garden this past Saturday. Father Judd from St. Clement did a wonderful job blessing his soil and plants, but he also provided us with some spiritual refreshment as well. It was a wonderful time and absolutely great camaraderie. This is a fun little spot in town. I encourage everyone to connect with the members and consider attending future events. Yesterday, the St. Bernard Fire Department, St. Bernard Police Department held their first safety night out. This event was moved from Ross Park where it was normally held on a Saturday in the fall. I have to admit, I was originally in doubt about having this during the weeknight, but it was absolutely fabulous. There was a great turnout from the community, but we also had more mutual aid agencies than we ever had before. Kudos to our organizers, Jason Smith from the Fire Department and CJ Moffett from the Police Department. Thank you to the community for showing up and thank you for the awesome volunteers and sponsors, which include Ashland Avenue Baptist Church, who sponsored the bounce house and provided the hot dogs and chips. All of the members of Local 450, all of our police and firefighters are incredible chiefs. I can't say enough about how impressed I was. I would also like to congratulate Sergeant Mike Petrafki on his upcoming promotion to lieutenant and Officer Lucas Barrow for his upcoming promotion to sergeant. I will officially be swearing them in on Tuesday evening, and I promise that I will be having the ceremonial swearing in here in council chambers at a date that is mutually agreeable to all parties. Stay tuned for information on our Independence Day celebration here in the village that will be held on Saturday, July 5th. Rosy Fireworks will be back again to provide us with another awesome show, and there will be a fun-filled afternoon and evening planned that includes a great concert. Lastly, I wanted to give everyone notice that I'll be serving the Village of Elmwood Place with my notice to intent to either suspend or end service for fire and EMS. There was a recent situation where a staff lieutenant for the Fire Department, Nicholas Whitlock, distributed a text to other members of their department saying, "Me and Kyle have decided Squad 39 is now District 39 and Brian can kill himself." Brian being referred to as our chief in this and in this description of reassignment of equipment. I will not tolerate this kind of comment from a mutual aid agency and one that we provide a more a majority of their firefighting capability and a large portion of their advanced life support services as well. Mental health is a very serious subject, and I could not subject our firefighters and paramedics to a potentially have to work side by side in a life-saving situation where they may be dependent on this officer. Even their legal counsel makes me ill in referring to this as locker room talk. This is unacceptable, and I ask for your support as I bring this issue to the attention of the Elmwood Place Village Council with the obvious legal requirements of our mutual aid agreement. So I'm asking for your support. I'm not going to tolerate this. So I'll be marching up there. You're welcome to join me, but no one's going to make a comment like that, even in joking. It's this is not even funny. So just be prepared, I may stir the pot. I have also implemented a new social media policy that went into effect today via executive order. We need to provide clear requirements for posting on our village social media accounts, and this was something that was long overdue. Anyone that has any questions, you've been provided with a copy that will be also posted on the village website, posted on all the social media accounts so that all users and participants on those media pages will be aware of what will be tolerated and what legally is allowed. Lastly, I am going to give Chief Young, who is going to give us a status on our frontline pumper that blew an engine. So you're aware that we did buy a new fire engine that will be here tomorrow, but not be able to be used. But in the meantime, our frontline apparatus actually did blow an engine and we're just getting by. So there is going to be a cost because, you know, this is still a valuable piece of equipment, even though it will be going to our reserve unit, but we can't just send it to the scrapyard. So we do need to make an investment in repowering that unit. So I'm actually going to ask Chief Young if he wouldn't mind just to give us an update.
Okay, good evening. So the mayor kind of hit the bright point, I shouldn't say the bright points, the main points. If you guys are aware, our 2011 E1 engine, which will eventually become our reserve engine when we get our take delivery of our new engine. Our new one should be delivered to Vogelpool tomorrow. However, it's going to be some upgrades and things need to happen in radios, some small things before we can actually get it in service. We're trying to expedite that. I've been in contact with Vogelpool today multiple times trying to get that stuff organized. So anyhow, this is the engine that back in 2016 was part of the flood. We had an engine replaced back then due to the flooding. And then I think I mentioned, actually spoke in front of council in September of last year. We had an issue with what's called diesel blow-by. We knew there was an issue. We were trying to limp it along. I said we'd get back to you once we knew what was going on. Anyway, unfortunately, we had a structure fire in Springfield Township on May 21st. On the way back, the truck lost power, so we kind of limped it back to the firehouse. It kind of seemed like it remedied itself. Anywho, it's happened multiple times since then. So on the 25th, we had specialty truck came to our firehouse, looked at it. They thought it was a turbo issue, so they recommended us driving it to their facility on that day, on Sunday before Memorial Day, so they could work on it. And in the process, we blew a radiator hose, and we think that's when we lost the engine. We're not 100% sure when it exactly happened, but there was already a pre-existing issue. A head gasket was leaking. So, long story short, it now needs a motor. So I gave Mayor Stutzel a copy of the first bid I have, and this is from specialty truck where we drove the truck to on that Sunday. And this quote is $85,800. So we were hoping 62 to 65. That was the initial quote we got, but the final quote came in at 85.8. So I will be having Cummins up in Sharonville is going to give us a competitive quote. I have hopefully talked to them tomorrow and get an idea. The other issue is it's probably six to 10 weeks before we can even get an engine. So we're running our 93 Sutfin as our primary truck, which has an electrical issue and also has a pump issue. So we're trying to make it. So far, so good, but we got a lot of things happening at one time. So any questions on that quote or anything I can explain further on that? If you don't mind while I'm up here, kind of reiterate what Mayor Stutzel said about the safety night out. Very well attended. There was several, several units there. HCPA dive team, HCPA SWAT, which Hamilton County Police Association, I'm sorry. HCPA Honor Guard, Ohio State Highway Patrol helicopter, Norwood K-9 unit, the SHIELD, Hamilton County USAR, Hamilton County Aerial Recognition Unit, which is part of USAR, Hamilton County LEPC, Women Helping Women, Hamilton County Communication Center, and the American Red Cross. Several people donated their time and efforts to this and also products. I would personally like to thank the Service Department for their help, recreation, Mayor Stutzel for his assistance yesterday. He did was there the whole time and helped us quite a bit. Chris Sauer and Gus Stutzel for helping clean it up and anybody else who I might have missed that participated. Again, it was a wonderful event and a great turnout. So thank you very much.
That concludes our report.
Thank you, Mayor Stutzel. Auditor, Ms. Berkwald?
Well, I will start my report. Thank you, Mr. President. I will start my report with additional appropriation ordinance for the first one being 788 Equipment Maintenance for $86,000. And then the other one, the other additional appropriation at this time is General Fund 2I9 Professional Services. This is for outsourcing legal services for $15,000. The mayor is starting to use legal outside legal representation on contract negotiations, so that is what that is for. I will continue to review the other line items, but at this point, I think those are the only two additional ones. I did notice today we're starting to run maybe a little low, but I'll keep an eye on our fuel. And I guess that's because fuel prices are up, but that is not needed at this point, but I just wanted to give you a heads up. So I'm asking for an additional appropriation ordinance for those two items to be placed on the table. Secondly, on the I'm asking to be placed on the table Resolution 9, 2025. I put a copy in everybody's mailboxes. This is the resolution that will go to the Board of Elections to put the levy renewal on the ballot for November 4th of 2025. At this point, they're saying this levy will bring in $599,038 to the village. I would ask council to please put that on the agenda on the on the table and to support it. Finally, let's see, it was put under under myself on the agenda and I'm probably going to need some help on it since I really didn't do it, which will be the meant to match the the purchasing bids to mirror the state at 75,000. And before we start discussion on this on that, there is a very good chance I might not be able to make the meeting in two weeks. So I've asked the treasurer to please report, read the report for the public meeting. Just to reiterate, this is just a proposed projected budget, and I'm going to be honest, this one of all is not going to probably be our final budget because we're going to have a new service safety director and he's going to be doing that budget. But we do have to have something to the county, so I prepared one based on this year's budget to mirror that. And needless to say, we will be changing it in November, but that's what you'll be reading. You do not vote on this at this time. This is just a public hearing to tell the public what we were what we propose to send to the county. The county looks at it. If they agree with it, then they will send me back their numbers and there will be something to vote on in usually September or October. So basically, before the council meeting, she'll just read this and you can continue on. If anybody has any questions regarding the village for the Board of Elections, I would really appreciate you to do it tonight in case I'm not here to hold and that would hold up the vote at the next meeting. So are there any questions on that? Okay, so I'm hoping it goes smoothly then. I think that is all I have, but let's discuss changing the the purchase to the state minimum level. There's two different ordinances out there, so I don't. Can you help me with this maybe? Thank you.
Sure, be happy to. So I think that the our auditor had suggested it's been some time since the council revisited the ceiling that we have currently on bidding, and it was at $50,000. The amount that the state had up until 2024 was 75,000. That was the most recent increase. At that time, the legislature, I think, decided in 2024 that rather than having to go back every two or three years and increase it and have to go through the process, they would simply just tie it to the CPI increase each year. And so I think the recommendation from staff at this point is rather than fixing it at 75, which is now not the current number of the state, but just affixing it to the ORC code in that situation. And I know Valerie and I have talked about that so that it would adjust automatically each year and then the council wouldn't have to deal with it. And it's tied to the CPI. That's the increase each year. So that was the legislature's decision after having every two or three years to go back and make that change or getting so far behind that it was not realistic based on what the cost of some of the items are that we have to purchase. That's was their their decision to make, and I think it'd make sense from the administrative standpoint for the council to consider doing that as well and just affixing it to ORC.
Mr. President, Mr. Schuldmeier. Yes, so we I think you have one version ahead of you that just ties it to the fixed dollar amount of 75,000, which was the number that set forth in the in the ORC. But it does, as he said, it does tie it to an increase basically regularly. When it was first, we first discussed it two weeks ago, the number was that was proposed to me was the 7500s. That's what we that was initially done, but after further discussion, it does make more sense, I think, to tie it to what it so it matches the state. And as I said, it's set at 75,000 and it goes up slightly incrementally basically every every year. But we prepared both because didn't know what your guidance was and what you wanted to do, but you have both before you.
Mr. President?
Ms. Schuldmeier?
My only comment is, isn't that how we have a check and checks and balance as far as? I thought years ago, that's that's why we made it 50, and we're a small village compared to the state purchasing to where. Maybe I'm misunderstanding, but I just I just thought that's the whole reason we went to the 50,000 because it was increased quite a bit at the 50,000 from where we were before that, I believe. But my thing is, is in my head, I'm thinking the state purchasing, they purchase a lot more at a higher quality, higher whatever standard compared to the village. And I always thought we kept it at a reasonable amount so that it was a checks and balance. They couldn't, sorry, administration, but the administration just couldn't go out and purchase whatever they wanted at a higher dollar amount without the approval of the seven council members.
Mr. Schuldmeier?
Ms. Van Valkenburg?
You're not wrong. You're not wrong, Ms. Hausfeld. I mean, certainly the the state has much more buying power and spends more money than we would ever be able to do. And it is your decision to make. But the reality of it is, is the costs are going up and it's costing us more. For example, that engine was what 20,000 more than I think the chief thought it was going to come in at. So I mean, that is kind of the reality that we are facing. Obviously, it's in your hands, but we would recommend at a minimum going up to the 700, the 75,000. But actually, there there is. Sorry about that. Just you should be aware that, you know, other places are going are matching it to the states just because I think we are facing a period of inflation. We are facing tariffs coming in, maybe, maybe not. Depends on what's going to happen at any given day. But, you know, the the reality is that we are in an inflationary period to some extent, but it obviously is your choice.
Mr. President?
Mr. Stutzel?
Council is obviously still in control of, you know, budgetary expenditures, increases, additional appropriations, and so forth. So council doesn't lose control. However, what is trending is that the the normal experience that we're having here with expenditures is that they are trending up and we're not having. So we were at 25,000 for an ungodly period of time that was way too low. We then, you know, coming out of COVID, you know, we continued on with up to 50, and now it's the point where, again, normal expenditures are above that. But again, we still would be coming to council for approval of expenditures, especially when it comes to the budget, anything that we're asking for an additional appropriation for, so you're not losing control. But the fact is, is that we still go out for bid. You know, we we go get administer the normal number of quotes that we need, but the official bidding process is not going to. We can't go through all of that extra red tape that's constantly happening where it holds us up when we have emergency repairs that have to be made on demand to things. And that's all. And I don't, I understand what you're saying, a system of checks and balances. I'm not disagreeing at all, but based on what is the spending level is inflated to, this is necessary.
Mr. President? And hopefully, maybe this helps a little bit. This is really just a bid process. So this is like, and now we're it's not even going to be enough to do this. So now Brian has to go out and get multiple bids to figure out the best thing for an engine. And a lot of time and a lot of times you have to go out and advertise in the newspaper, and it does. It'll take two to three months sometimes just to get the bids and get everything back in. So this is just the bid in the way we normally do our budget. There's not extras in there, so even if we got the bids, we'd still have to go back to the council. I would say the majority of the time to ask for the funding. So this is just to make the bid process a little easier. Like if if we we know we can get something, say it's six, well, let's just say 76,000. I'm just going to use that number. I don't know at this point. We could go ahead with the project, but we would still have to ask for the money. But we don't have to go out and advertise and do the whole bid thing. So this is, if you want to look at it that way, look at this as basically just changing what we go out for bids on. Even in the majority of time, when it's this high of a price, we go and get multiple bids anyway to get the cheapest price or the best vendor. So but that's really what this is, the bidding on it. I hope that makes sense.
Mr. Williams, you mentioned that the current state threshold is even higher than 75. Do you know what it is currently?
I think the inflation adjustment amount now is about 77. Because it's been a couple of years where there's been a CPI increase.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions from council?
Mr. President? To answer your original question, Valerie, about which of these versions that we would prefer, I would prefer the one that is tied to inflation and what the state decides. Regardless on whether or not we should be raising it or not, I would say if we are going to raise it, I would prefer the one that is annotated version two.
Any other comments from council, questions? I guess I'll ask for a motion to place.
Mr. President?
Connor?
I make a motion to place ordinance number 19, 2025, that reads, "All expenditures in excess of the competitive bid threshold as set by the Ohio General Assembly and incorporated within the Ohio Vice Code, Section 9.17 as amended, on the table for the next council meeting."
I'll second that.
A motion made by Mr. Morton, seconded by Mr. Culbertson. Are there any remarks? If not, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So ordered. So Peggy, just a question then. That that takes care of 19, right?
Sorry, yes, we need a motion to put the additional appropriation ordinance. That will be 18 on the table.
That will be one or two, just one then?
Just one.
Okay, then I'll ask for a motion to place ordinance number 18.
Mr. President? I make a motion to place ordinance number 18, 2025 on the table.
Okay, motion by Mr. Morton, seconded by Mrs. Hausfeld to approve. Are there any remarks? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So ordered. And then we need to do Resolution Number 9 as well.
Mr. President?
Mr. Culbertson?
Make a motion, we put Resolution Number 9 on the table for the next council meeting.
A motion by Mr. Culbertson, seconded by Mr. Estep, to place Resolution Number 9 on the table for the next council meeting. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So ordered. Mr. Mayor, I think at this point, we want to make a motion to place ordinance number 17 on the table so that we can go into special meeting.
Mr. President, that's a wonderful idea. Yes, I would love that.
Members of council, can I have a motion to place number resolution or ordinance number 17?
Mr. President?
Mr. Morton?
I move to place ordinance number 17, 2025 on the table.
I'll second.
Motion made by Mr. Morton, seconded by Mr. Culbertson to place ordinance number 19 on the table. I'm sorry, 17, thank you, on the table. Are there any remarks? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So ordered.
I just was asking Jeff if 17 was the only one we're voting on in the special elect or special council tonight.
Yes, that's correct. 17 is the only thing we'll vote on special in a special meeting tonight. So we have a couple more minutes. We can move on to law director, Ms. Van Valkenburg?
Thank you. I've been reviewing a couple of contracts, including the employment contract that's attached to ordinance number 17. I'm also looking at a contract that Mr. Williams provided that with foreign consultant, and I'll be giving him some feedback on that. Also, there was, and I, Mr. Williams will bring it up, but I know there was some discussion at the last meeting about a project that involves an easement with the Eagles in the 5th third. And I did go down to the recorder's office and physically and physically searched, well, everything's pretty much online, but physically searched for the easement. I can't find that it was, I can't see that it was actually recorded. I checked for the year of council voted on it, and I checked for the next year, and I don't see it. So we may have to put together a resolution or something, and I'll coordinate with Mr. Williams on that. We'll obviously maybe check with Eagles, see if they have a copy or the vendor that we used to prepare it, that was used to prepare it, see if we can find it. And if not, we'll probably have to come forward with like a resolution or something for the next meeting. But I don't, I literally learned that just this afternoon, so I may have something for that at the next or for the council meeting. Thank you. Oh, and I do need to go into executive session after the conclusion or toward the end of Cal so we can talk about pending litigation. Thank you.
Thank you. Treasurer, Ms. Darren Camp?
Thank you, Mr. President. As of the end of May, we had revenue of $6,610,663.53. Our expenses were $6,474,254.96. And that concludes my report.
Mr. President? I make a motion that we pause the committee of the whole meeting until after our special council meeting.
Motion by Ms. Hausfeld, seconded by Mr. Estep. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So ordered. So we will start at 7:30 with the special council meeting. So we will have the special St. Bernard City Council, Village Council, sorry, meeting come to order. Ms. Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Morton? Mr. Stutzel?
Present.
Mr. Edwards?
Present.
Ms. Hausfeld?
Here.
Mr. Schuldmeier?
Present.
Mr. Culbertson?
Present.
And Mr. Estep?
Present.
Okay. Council, do we have a motion to? Oh, I'm sorry, clerk, will you please read the first reading of ordinance number 17, 2025?
Ordinance number 17, 2025, authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract with Mark Wendling as the director of public safe services and safety and declaring an emergency.
Thank you, members of council. You've heard the first reading of ordinance number 17, 2025. What is your pleasure on the second and third reading?
Mr. President?
Mr. Culbertson?
I make a motion, we suspend with the second, third readings of this ordinance.
I'll second.
A motion to suspend made by A motion to suspend made by Mr. Culbertson, seconded by Mr. Estep. Are there any remarks? If not, is there anyone in the audience wishing to address counsel on this ordinance? If not, clerk, will you please call the roll on suspension?
Mr. Morton?
Aye.
Mr. Stutzel?
Aye.
Mr. Edwards?
Aye.
Ms. Hausfeld?
Aye.
Mr. Schuldmeier?
Aye.
Mr. Culbertson?
Aye.
And Mr. Estep?
Aye.
Seven ayes, no nays. Motion carries. Members of council, what is your pleasure on adoption?
Mr. President?
Mr. Morton?
I move to adopt ordinance number 17, 2025.
I'll second.
A motion by Mr. Morton, seconded by Mr. Estep to adopt the ordinance. Clerk, will you please call the roll on adoption?
Mr. Morton?
Aye.
Mr. Stutzel?
Aye.
Mr. Edwards?
Aye.
Ms. Hausfeld?
Aye.
Mr. Schuldmeier?
Aye.
Mr. Culbertson?
Aye.
And Mr. Estep?
Aye.
Ordinance number 17, 2025 is adopted as read. At this time, does any member of council have anything under new or old business? At this time, does any member of council have anything under new or old business is what he had. At this time, does any member of the audience wishing to address counsel on this matter? Okay, then we will have a motion to come, well, do I have a motion to adjourn this special council meeting?
Mr. President, make a motion we adjourn.
I'll second.
Motion made by Mr. Culbertson, seconded by Mr. Estep. We are now, are all those in favor?
Aye.
We are now adjourned. So then, okay, we are now back into the committee of the whole meeting. We will pick it up with reports of administrative officials, safety and service director, Mr. Williams.
Thank you, Mr. President. I had a couple items I wanted to touch on tonight. The first one, if you recall from the last council meeting, we had introduced this potential project or idea where we could work with our friends at Fifth Third Bank. They were going to repave their portion of the parking lot. I've put in front of you tonight a few maps there. The first is one that shows the different pile lots altogether. So you can see that there's a portion of the lot that we know is our public parking lot that's owned by Fifth Third. There's a portion of it owned by the village, and there's a portion of it owned by the Eagles. And then the two aerials behind there delineate what is a little bit more close up, what's owned by the village and owned by the Eagles. So when we first got into the discussions on that, seemed like a great idea. I went to Mayor Stutzel and said, is that something that you think we'd be interested in doing? And he said, yes, the parking lot's in bad shape. It's been a long time since it was paved. And that would be a great opportunity for us to work collaboratively with with those other partners. So the engineer for Fifth Third has been working on that, preparing the plans, doing the engineering estimates for it. The Third is willing to lead the efforts to get the pricing for the paving of the parking lot. As we dug into it a bit, we found what our legal counsel has mentioned, that there was an easement back in 1981 that was approved by council, apparently not filed, but an easement agreement in which that a portion, and the reason it was, it precipitated, it was that we found out after the fact when this building was built, that we encroached on the Eagles property by seven foot on one corner of our building. And because of that encroachment, obviously, we had to have an easement because we were kind of illegally occupying a portion of their property. So that was all worked out in 1981. And as a condition for that easement, the Eagles asked that we maintain as a village their portion of the parking lot in perpetuity, in paving, striping, and clearing of snow and ice. But as I understand it, for many, many years, the parking lot's been treated as a whole, as a public parking lot. And so it it seemed to make a lot of sense. So what we're asking for tonight is the board to consider at the council meeting later this month, a resolution or ordinance that would provide us the ability to pay for the paving of our lot, plus the lot owned by the Eagles, that we have an easement that we've agreed to take care of. The price of both of those together, our portion of it would be $51,585. This is the engineering estimate when the actual bids finally come in. The engineer expected it's going to be a bit less than that. And then the portion that's owned by the Eagles would be $22,745. So that would essentially, plus what Fifth Third is doing, have the entire parking lot repaved and striped. So again, potentially a good, a good project for all of us. And with Fifth Third only doing their portion, it might look a bit strange, the way that we have all the different configurations of the lot. So that's, that's what we're going to throw out. I don't know if anybody has any questions about it at this point, but I want to kind of give you a visual so you can see how each one of those properties sort of cuts, cuts through there. It's odd, but it probably had something to do with the canal that ran through there many, many years ago, would be my guess. And that's why they're on that angle. So you might have any questions on that? We'll have that at the council meeting at the end of the month.
Mr. President, I'm sorry, I do have one question. Do we know about when they want to do it? Because I'm wondering about the funding of it.
Yes, their plan is to do it either at least two weeks before the German luau, or sometime afterwards. So it would not in any way interfere with our celebration during the summer. But yes, it would be during this, this fiscal year. And so we would probably need a supplementary budget appropriation for that.
Okay, so I'll have time to do, we don't, I was wondering if I had to add it into this one, but we should have time?
We do.
Okay, okay, thank you. That's it.
Secondly, I wanted to note, and I think I brought this up a couple of times in the past, we were fortunate enough to receive a $30,000 grant from Hamilton County, a planning grant. And we were able to utilize that for a study of our historic Vine Street Business District. And we set up a ad hoc committee to review proposals. We've been working with Aloy. They had actually prepared their request of proposals before I came on board. But we have, we had very, four very good companies that proposed. We narrowed it down as a committee to two, one being MKSK, the other being Yard and Company. After having in-person interviews a few weeks ago, the committee came to the conclusion, they felt like that Yard and Company, which is based in OTR, would be excellent for this. They've done a lot of very similar projects, recently Walnut Hills. They did one in Mount Healthy, and they've done them in other places as well. And they're really known for kind of rolling their sleeves up and helping to activate spaces. And I think that that's something that resonated with our committee, Mayor, I don't know if you agree, but it resonated. So we'll have at the meeting later this month. I know our legal counsel is reviewing the contract now, she mentioned. We'll have later this month the contract for you to consider for the $30,000 so we can get them started. It's an exciting project, and I think that there could be some really nice outcomes from that. And the study includes not only the historic district, but also extends down through the the properties that we have at the St. Bernard Square and across the street. So should be, should be really good. There'll be a lot of public engagement with that. That's another thing this company is very, very good at, is public engagement. The last thing I want to mention is that the mayor and I have gone through a couple of interviews for our zoning administrator position, and currently working on references as we speak. We're moving along with it. I don't know if we'll necessarily have a recommendation for you at the end of the month, maybe, maybe not. But we're trying to get it moving along. We do want to make sure that we get the best qualified person we can to not only help with enforcement of our codes, including property maintenance, but also some of the planning aspects that we don't have now. And if you read the job description that we had put together, it included helping manage the BZA process in trying to reconstitute our planning commission and some of those items. So hopefully, we'll have a really good top candidate for you, at least within the next month. And that concludes my report, Mr. President.
Tax Administrator, Administrator Ms. Helms?
Jonathan wanted to say something, I think.
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't see that.
Mr. President, sorry.
Mr. Mayor.
So just wanted real quick, not doubting you by any means, but the fact that we have some additional expenditures that we are going to be able to probably pay for, knowing that we're going to have some paving work that has to be done along the pool loop wall, some of the drainage, drainage work that has to be done, are we certain we're okay as far as to wait to actually maybe add a little more to this additional appropriation ordinance for the end of the month, knowing that they could call, you know, basically say that two weeks before the luau, say that they're going to do the job, and that being next month?
Mr. President, well then, what I would suggest is, because we did put some money in for the loop, but I know it's a little more, and now the paving project. Why don't, if it's okay with council, I can add like $100,002 capital improvements, oh, seven, oh, one, which could be used for all those projects. If you're in favor of that, I'll add that to it. Okay. I will do that.
I would be in favor of that. Anybody?
Okay.
Okay, sorry. Tax Administrator, Ms. Helms?
Thank you, Mr. Schuldmeier. I have the May 2025 end of month tax receipts. Tax collection for May of 2025 was $710,563. May of 2025 is up 12.63%, or $79,699 from May of 2024. Refunds for May were $29,400. Delinquent tax collected with capital recovery was $212. Delinquent tax collected with the Ohio Attorney General's Office was $78,039. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. We'll move to reports of standing committees. Finance, Mr. Morton?
Thank you, Mr. President. The next finance committee meeting scheduled for Wednesday, June 18th at 6:00 PM is canceled due to scheduling delays with our contact at Lisk. I'm scheduled to meet with them next week to discuss the implementation of a zero interest home repair program for our residents who are struggling economically. Separately, I would like to encourage folks to help save lives by participating in the Bend Strong Give Back Mobile Blood Drive, which will be right outside here in the, next door in the municipal building on Friday, July 25th, from noon to 6:00 PM. You can find more information about the importance and impact of blood and platelet donations at donateblood uc.edu. Thank you. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. President. Finance is currently closed in both directions between Railroad Avenue and Spring Grove Avenue. Due to the discovery of an old sewer line during ongoing railroad track repairs, the closure will remain in effect for an undetermined period of time while the issue is being addressed. Detour signs will be posted on Railroad Avenue, Beach Street, and Spring Grove Avenue to assist drivers with alternate routes. To ensure public safety and minimize disruptions, the Service Department is working diligently in coordination with the railroad to identify and implement a safe and effective solution as quickly as possible. Thank you. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Public improvements, Mr. Edwards?
Thank you, Mr. President. There was no need for a public improvement committee meeting, but I would like to highlight a meeting that occurred Tuesday night. I'd like to report that Councilman Ray Culbertson and I were privileged to attend a revived Cincinnati meeting June 10th. The meeting was the Mitchell Avenue Workshop, which was designed to update us on any news about any area development, and was a listening session for ideas to improve neighborhoods in our area. Although it was sponsored by the City of Cincinnati, mine and Ray's comments, questions, and concerns were well received. We brought up the Mitchell Avenue and how it leaves a bad impression on people as they exit I-75 and drive to St. Bernard. Ray brought up a positive, possible redevelopment of Kessler Avenue, West Street area. Most of the meeting was presented by representatives of Urban Design Associates. They're urban design architects designing walking and bike paths, gathering areas, ways to ease traffic, and many more ways to make our life better, for, better for our residents. They told Ray and I that we are to include it in this plan, and they have contacted our administration in the past, and will continue to communicate in the future. We also made valuable contacts with groups from North Avondale that share some of our same concerns, primarily traffic on Mitchell Avenue. Be nice to be able to work together on issues that concern us both. Ray and I both believe this was a very positive meeting for us to attend, and there will be another meeting in the fall with further updates. Thank you, Mr. President. This concludes my report.
Thank you. Safety, Ms. Hausfeld?
Thank you, Mr. President. I too just wanted to thank everyone that helped out last night at the St. Bernard Police and Fire Night Out, or Touch a Truck is what some people call it. It was an awesome evening. I didn't get to stay long. But for what I did see and what I got to participate in, it was, it was an awesome evening. Kids were loving every bit of it, and the parents really appreciated it. The, I had actually a citizen that called me today and told me how nice it was. So just wanted to thank everybody involved with putting on last night's terrific evening out. Thank you.
Thank you. No report for laws, contracts, and claims. Marketing, Mr. Culbertson?
Thanks, Mr. President. On Saturday, June 21st, there will be a concert in the pavilion with Stagger Lee. The event starts at 7:00 PM. Bring a chair, a cooler of your favorite drinks, and we will supply the food. The next St. Bernard Dole Grove Historical Society meeting takes place on Monday, June 16th at 7:00 PM in the main level of the municipal building. The program will be about Henning Camp Dairy presented by Jim Henning Camp. Finally, now is the time to prepare for the German luau. The event takes place on Friday, August 1st, from 5:00 PM to midnight, and Saturday, August 2nd, from noon to midnight. The luau committee is accepting applications for booths, booths, parade floats, and nominations for the 2025 Grand Marshall. Please check the German luau Facebook page for more details. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Mrs. Industry, Mr. Estep?
No report.
Okay, thank you. At this time, does any member of the audience wishing to address counsel? Are there any? Okay. Yeah. Do we want to, yeah. Can I have a motion go into executive session for?
Discuss pending litigation.
Discuss pending litigation.
Mr. President?
Mr. Morton?
I move to enter executive, executive session to discuss pending litigation.
Second that, Mr. President.
A motion by Mr. Morton, seconded by Mrs. Hausfeld.
Yes.
Mrs. Hausfeld, sorry. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Do you have to do a roll on that? Okay. Clerk, will you please also call the roll?
Mr. Morton?
Aye.
Mr. Stutzel?
Aye.
Mr. Edwards?
Aye.
Ms. Hausfeld?
Here.
Aye.
Ms. Schuldmeier?
Aye.
Mr. Culbertson?
Aye.
And Mr. Estep?
Aye.
Seven ayes, no nays. So ordered. All right, can I have a motion to come out of executive session?
Make a motion that we come out of executive session.
Second.
A motion by Mr. Culbertson, seconded by Mr. Edwards. Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Mr. Morton?
Aye.
Mr. Stutzel?
Aye.
Mr. Edwards?
Aye.
Ms. Hausfeld?
Aye.
Mr. Schuldmeier?
Aye.
Mr. Culbertson?
Aye.
And Mr. Estep?
Seven ayes, no nays. So ordered. Looks like for the next council meeting, we have resolution number nine that will be voted on, and ordinance number 18 and 19 that we have to vote on. Next council meeting will be held on June 26th, 2025.
Mr. Schuldmeier?
Yes.
There may also be something, depending on what we need to do about the easement, there may, we may needs a resolution at the next council meeting regarding the easement that's involved with the project, the Fifth Third project.
Yeah, understand. Do we need to put that resolution on the table in case it's needed now?
Yes, please.
God recommend that.
Do I have a motion?
Mr. President, I move to put the easement resolution on the table for the next council meeting.
I'll second that.
Motion by Mr. Morton, seconded by Ms. Hausfeld. All those in favor?
Aye.
So ordered. At this time, I'll accept a motion to adjourn.
Mr. President?
Mr. Culbertson?
Make a motion we adjourn.
I'll second that.
Motion by Mr. Culbertson, seconded by Ms. Hausfeld. All those in favor?
Aye.
So ordered.